Welcome to the March 12 Sherburne School Committee Meeting here at the Dover Sherburne Middle School Library. Call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. I guess before we get into any further details, are there any community comments this evening? No? All right. Do I need to do that preamble because we're hybrid or are we? Okay.
Any votes will just have to be roll call.
Roll call votes. All right. So the first item is to talk about the FY '25 budget. So I want to call a public hearing to be open and the purpose for that is to kind of discuss the budget in an open public and be able to enable a sort of two-way dialogue related to the budget and the process that we went through to arrive at where we are here today. So before I hand it over to Beth and Dawn to give a little bit more detail into how we got to where we are, I just want to give kind of like 50,000-foot view on some of the details that we've been through. So this is sort of our third view on the budget at this point, obviously prepared and presented to us in the package a couple of days ago to kind of read and digest. This is, like I mentioned, the third time that we're seeing it. First time presented a couple of months ago and from that point iterative to review any changes to what all is going to be sort of presented here tonight to get to the proposed FY '25 budget. I'd like to thank everybody on the school committee as well just for the care, attention, and focus they've given to the contents of the budget. It's obviously important and a huge driver of a lot of the focus of everybody in town. Secondly, for the administration in kind of going through an incredibly thoughtful process, both working through the mechanics of rolling things forward as well as also looking at and focusing on one of the needs of the of the school and thinking creatively about how do we best use taxpayers' money to educate the kids here in town at Pine Hill. And I would say, thirdly, thank you obviously to the actual town members as well for entrusting us with this important process and just want you guys that are listening or paying attention to understand that there is an incredibly diligent process that goes through. A lot of that culminates here in these meetings here, but there's hours and hours of work that goes to getting us to where we are here today. So before we go into any of like the minutia here prepared for tonight, team, is there anything that you wanted to cover related to that?
No.
Okay. From the public perspective, any questions that you guys have? Nope. Okay. I can't see Becca, but Becca, is there anything from your side?
Sorry, I was just here shaking my head. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Becca.
Okay, thank you. So I would just like to second all your gratitude first to Dawn for all of the work that she does all year round and often juggling three budgets, last year's, this year's, and next year's. So thank you for all of your collaboration and in hard work to the school committee for working along with us to make sure that we are keeping our strategic plan at the forefront of all of our decision-making and for working through all of the details of the three budgets and like you said, to the taxpayers of Dover and in this case Sherburne for supporting an excellent education for all of our students. This process actually begins planning for next year's budget in October. We have our school principals, in this case Dr. Brown, work with her professional learning community and curriculum leaders to develop what they need at the school level to continue their programming. We then meet with them at central office, Dawn, Denny, Kate McCarthy, and myself to look at it through multiple lenses, both the financial, teaching and learning, and special education lenses to make sure that we're fully supporting all kids. And then we bring version 1.0 to you, collect feedback from the community and all the members. Version 2.0 usually takes into consideration some retirements and shifts that happen during the winter, usually in with a reduction in the ask moving forward. And then through Dawn's creative thinking and detailed orientation, we're able to bring you a third version today, which we will present as your final version to go forward.
Yeah, actually, they don't have a version three.
Three districts.
Three districts. Some do, some don't.
Version three is same as version two, I apologize. And you know, again, our strategic plan, which was all community members engaging in a conversation about the future of Dover Sherburne for the next three to five years and the buckets around excellence and innovation learning, supporting all students, professional development, engaging the community, safe and sustainable places, spaces, and professional development for staff are at the forefront of our decision-making. So that is the big picture. Without further ado, Dawn, please get into the details.
Exactly. So I'll just fill in a few more pieces of the puzzle. So in February, after you saw version 2.0, Beth, Dennis and I met with the whole Sherburne Advisory Committee. It's our opportunity to ask us questions too about the Sherburne budget and making sure that we understand their budget constraints, which we do take into consideration where we can, and answer any questions they have. Because as you know, they're the ones who will make the final recommendation on Saturday, actually, to move forward to town meeting. So that's an important process to go through. And then tonight, we're here with the public hearing because technically this is the night where the public is open to see the presentation and ask any questions that they may have. So you see all the levels of the budget process that take place. And again, on Saturday is the town's public hearing. So tonight's yours, Saturday's theirs, and that's an opportunity again for anyone to ask questions about any of the town budgets at that meeting. So after that meeting, Sherburne Advisory will vote on what moves forward and as you know, then it goes to town meeting. So let's talk a little bit about what the budget process looks like. We always like to go over our budget assumptions. And so we started saying, we used to have COVID, hybrid. We are now saying regular now. Maybe next year, I'll even take that away. So regular school operations and we're seeing level enrollment. And in your budget book that you received back in November, you have our 10-year historical and our five-year projections. And we're staying within that pocket of just under 400. And we, as we mentioned, make sure we're working in compliance with the town's budget guidance. And just as a reminder, in Sherburne, it's level funded, but we're also given contractual, we're giving allowances for our contractual agreements. There's no way you can keep your budget level and have the raises that you need to keep staff on board. And then we're always looking at our, as Beth mentioned, the district strategy to make sure that there's new things we're doing or things even we're doing on a normal basis, they fit into one of our goals that we're trying to achieve. And that's sort of our driving force for making some decisions. And then we are doing continued assessment of students, I think at the elementary level, especially because of the impact that that year and a half, two years had. We're still seeing some of those ramifications. And so we're always putting that into, if you know, the interventionist that we added, there are things that we've added to support students to sort of make up what they lost. And hopefully, we didn't lose too much. Okay, so as you know, we look at the school budget in two buckets, the in district and the out of district. So we'll talk about the budget drivers in the in district. Payroll represents 85% of your in district budget. So obviously, staff is huge for us and that's what drives it. Our contractual increases on our ratified agreements are 3%. Keep in mind, though, that the educators also have steps and lane increases. So the lane, the step increases can range from 4% to 9%, depending on where they're falling in the matrix. And then if they change lanes, that's another couple of percentages. We can, on average, compute that you'll take the 3% contractual plus the 1.6 is the average on total educator compensation because it would vary right between staff members. But you're looking at about 4.6% increase on your educators that are in your budget. And then, as you know, we have a reserve in the budget right now for educational assistance because we were just going to begin their contract negotiations for fiscal year '25 and beyond. We also, a big driver is staffing, is based on enrollment and student educational needs. And we'll talk about some of those. I have a slide where we'll talk about some of the impact of student needs and what we're seeing to make changes on fiscal year '25. And then we were lucky this year to have some salary savings from staffing changes that happened after the budget occurred and also a reduction of .3 FTEs in some related service providers. So those two alone, right there, was about $100,000 that was taken away from your base. That definitely helps cover the 4.6% increase that we have on the other educators who did stay. So I think that's important to note that the numbers, when we talk about what your increase was, there were some things that helped us get to that level. Student enrollment, we were remaining with 21 classroom sections. Our current is 391. We're projecting 389. And our class sizes right now range from 17 and a half, I know you can't have a half person, but 17 and a half to 22. Know that your classroom guidelines are 18 to 23. So we're within that and working with that. We continue to do trend budgeting on all of our other operating accounts and just know that is where we look to see what we're spending historically and if the budget's always over or under, we will accommodate for that. But in addition, you know that you have some increased costs for the new math curriculum, transportation, because we automatically have a contractual increase on our Gen Ed transportation, our yellow school buses, along with we're continuing to see fuel adjustments. The diesel fuel price hasn't really come down the same way as regular fuel. So monthly we do, we are seeing a fuel adjustment increase on our busing contract and utilities. We all know that electricity has seen some spikes. And although we have a contract for our supply, it's the delivery that's also skyrocketing right now. So we did see an increase in utilities. One thing I wanted to bring up, we don't talk a lot about this, for in district budget drivers, but we receive, or the town of Sherburne receives Chapter 70 state funding. So there is some, we talk about circuit breaker a lot, right, that offsets out of district, but we do receive some Chapter 70 state funding. And the preliminary cherry sheet number for Sherburne for fiscal year '25 is about 859,000. So keep that in mind that when you see your budget, that 859 is coming in to assist the taxpayer so they're not taxed the whole number that we approved tonight. I think we sometimes lose sight of that because we don't look at revenue. But I think that's an important piece for Sherburne taxpayers to understand that there is somebody that comes in to offset the school budget. So we look at the budget drivers for out of district. We're projecting 13 placements in fiscal year '25. That's in contrast to 10 in fiscal year '24. Our net increase in tuition cost is 179,000. I always say be careful about that number because if you know the exhibit that I put in your budget book shows you the ins and outs. So we have larger numbers going in and out and it nets to 179. But no, that's encompassing a lot of activity, both new placements and placements that are graduating or aging out. We're seeing school tuition cost increases of approximately 4% and the same increase on our transportation cost. Circuit breaker reimbursement, we are using 375,000 to offset your operating budget and that reflects about 85% of what we anticipate to receive. So we've left ourselves a little cushion. But that is more than we used in the previous years. And so you'll sort of, you always have to look at when we talk about out of district tuition, you really need to take what we approve in the budget and what we're using in circuit breaker so you really see your total. And we'll see that in one of the other slides. So our fiscal year '25 operating budget that we're looking for approval tonight is the $8,241,810, an increase of just under 4%. And as I mentioned, we look at it in two pieces. So your in district increase was 2.73% and the out of district was 14%. We're adding this year too is sort of computing what the per pupil budget expenditures are. And so we're looking, and remember, this is not fully loaded. So if you went to the DUSI website to see what the cost was for Sherburne, you would see a number higher than that because we don't have some of the indirect costs that the town includes. We don't have health benefits. And that is all added, though, in our end-of-the-year report, which is what DUSI uses to compute. So don't, this is our base, but it costs in our school budget. And then to compare that to where we were in fiscal year '24, we had an increase of 8.17, but that was really being driven by your out of district, as you can see. So this is a lot of numbers, but this sort of shows by category, the last three years of actuals, where we were with fiscal year '24 budget and where we're proposing for fiscal year '25. And on that too shows you, again, we talked about salaries being approximately 85%. You can see it's 87% and just sort of the general categories of our other operating expenditures.
Just don't breathe.
Okay. I was a little spooky. Okay. So it's another way to look at that is breaking it out and looking at the in district by the different categories. So this is educational. So this is direct services to students. So our staffing is approximately 5.1 million and that includes over 40 FTEs for general education instruction, including our specialists, our literacy, our math, SEL, our multiple language learners, and educational assistance support. Then we have our special education services and related categories with them and their educational support, guidance, and support services, which is librarian and nurses. So it gives you sort of a flavor of how we categorize by FTEs, the direct, indirect, in district cost. And then if you look at the expenditures, we really do a lot with a little. At 285,000, that includes your textbooks, curriculum software, general supplies, any needed extra support for special education students on IEPs that are in district. That could be some of the outside consulting and such, our technology needs, and our professional development for our staff. So we spend approximately 5.38 million, which is 75% of our in district budget directly on student service, you know, educating students. But then you can't do that without some support, right? So our next, oh, I want to actually, no, I'm going to talk about significant budget adjustments. So, and these are all included in that slide we just showed. So we're implementing a new math curriculum, which you'll be talking further about in April. And we are seeing a one-time cost of program of sort of purchase the curriculum of 35,000. And then we are looking to increase at each elementary school the math coach up to 1.0. So we're at each elementary school is picking up a .5 FTE for that. So the new math curriculum and the support that's needed is a net increase of approximately 85,000, realizing that the 35,000 will come out of your budget for fiscal year '26. So that's a one-time cost. And the other thing that we talked about during version 2.0 was the transfer of the Connections Program, formerly known as GOLs, to Chicaring, really due to the cohort. So if you think about student needs and what we have, the real student needs are sitting more at the Chicaring level versus Pine Hill. So we're moving the program to Pine Hill. That projection looks like it's going to be three to five years. So it makes sense to move it over to Chicaring. And then the few students that are at Pine Hill that need to attend that, then flip to your out of district. So you see, you saw a reduction of a 1.0 FTE and four FTEs for educational assistance. But as I said, note that several students will attend and that's reflected in your out of district budget. So that was a savings or a reduction in your in district direct support of 200,000 from that staffing. And so those really were the significant budget adjustments. Everything else was, we were working really at level service of what we had been providing. So the other piece, our overview of administrative related support services. So those are the ones that support what's happening in the building, but not necessarily direct support to students. And we have staffing of approximately $1.2 million. That includes shared central office staff. So knowing that everyone that you see that our leadership team worked for all three districts and our salaries are actually shared with a cost ratio across all three. And that also includes IT. And then we move on to your building base. So your principal, assistant principal, and their administrative assistants, and then facilities. So that's sort of the core team that's working to keep the building running and the operations running in order to support the students. And our expenditures there are a little higher because obviously that includes your transportation for the busing, our building operations, our maintenance expenses, all of our utilities, and then general non-instructional operating expenses like attorney fees, contracts that we have to support operations. So you have about 25% of your in district budget is actually support. So I think that's an interesting way to look. We look at it line item, but I think for the community to see, when you say 75% of your in district budget goes directly to education, the students, and only 25% to support, I think that's a pretty, a pretty good ratio. So then we look at the overview of out of districts. So our tuition costs for fiscal year '25 are projected to be 864,000. But like I said, keep in mind, that's net of 375,000. So your gross is really closer to a million. We, again, are looking at 13 placements and it's good to sort of see the ages of where they are because this sort of helps you formulate, if you have a lot, say, in the six to 12, then you know, they're eventually going to graduate out. And then you know, if you're in pre-K to five, you may either be there for the long haul or be able to transition back into in district. So out of the 13, really, the core are eight placements at the six to 12 level right now. And you've got a few in the pre-K to five and a few in the placements of 12, plus 12 grade, knowing that we cover students through age 22 as needed. And our transportation costs are at 145,000, same as this year, just for informational purposes. Majority of our students are transported via our Accept Collaborative, who transports for member districts and Accept. And by doing that, we're able to share rides with neighboring communities, which hopefully makes that more cost-effective for us. And as well as there's a few parents that be reimbursed for them driving their students to their out of district Then we also, so that's your budget. But I think it's important for the public to also realize that there are additional things that are supported within our school operations that are being funded by federal and state entitlement grants. Obviously, the special education-related grants is approximately 100,000. Those all support educational assistant positions who support special education students. We have the REAP grant and that's unique to Sherburne. That's the only district and that's mainly because you're in a rural district with Sherburne being there. So you're eligible for this grant that really supports literacy. And we use that to, we have our literacy interventionist sits in there along with some portion of the assistant principal that supports literacy. So that's how we use that grant. And then we have various title-related grants of approximately 30,000 that we use to cover our mentoring program, tutoring supports, and professional development. And those do change from year to year. 30,000 is what we're projecting or is what we have for fiscal year '24. It could be a little different for fiscal year '25. But I think it's important to see that if we ever lost some of those grants, that there could be some things we need to bring into the operating funds. And then, so just again, Dennis has already thanked the town of Sherburne, but we do, are very appreciative of the support. We are, the schools are one of the largest pieces of the town's budget. And so we appreciate the support from both the taxpayers and the town to allow us to continue to sort of have a great school district. And we always find ways to make things happen, but it's only with their support too that we're able to do it. And I don't think it's, as many of you are on CSA, but the CSA and the Solven Fund, which I believe you have a gift coming tonight from the Solven Fund, actually let us put on sort of the nice-to-haves that our operating budget doesn't cover and it's so important. And so I think the gratitude needs to be shared and acknowledgement that they make Pine Hill the special school that it is by their continued support. So then I'll turn it back over to you to see if there's any questions from the public.
Questions?
I was wondering, I understand that you guys are considering two different math curricula to change to reveal mathematics and illustrative mathematics. You stated here that there's going to be a one-time fee of $85,000 to implement those changes. I'm wondering, regardless of which curricula you decide going with, will it be the same cost?
Yes, for the first year, it will be. That's why we were able to put off the final decision because it wasn't going to have a budgetary impact. So remember that 85,000, the 50,000 of it is a staff position that will stay in the budget. The 35,000 is what we are adding for not materials, but it's sort of like the base curriculum because there will be some most likely materials included on a year-to-year basis. So that's the main purchase of sort of the curriculum itself. And regardless of which program they go with, that initial cost will be the same. What's going to differ is what our future year's cost will be. So we'll have to deal with that in fiscal year '26. But for '25, it was basically a wash between the two.
And that variable part is like textbooks, teaching aids, that kind of...
It's more the workbooks, yeah.
And there's already money in the budget currently for our current math program.
Yes, for the workbooks. So we're only picking up, right, because it's cost more than 35, but 35 is the incremental cost. Because we already, we're, we already have workbooks in there. So we didn't have to increase it for that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yep. Anything else? I don't, Becca, can you speak up? I don't know if, I can't see you. So I don't know if you have any other questions.
No, all good here.
You're good. Anyone else?
Dawn, I'm just going to get into the weeds if you could help me, if you could just explain something to me. I just noticed back on the transportation slide, on the slide that includes the transportation.
For out of district?
No, it's the FY '25.
Oh, the big operating expense.
Yep. Just out of curiosity, and I'm so sorry, because apparently, I can't see anywhere, is there, is there one year in the past where it actually seems like the, why was transportation, can you explain to me why transportation was 163 in FY '23 and, but now we've lowered it? Is it just general costs? Is there something there that was...
Oh, so that's special education transportation. And that can definitely vary depending on what students we're transporting.
Okay.
And so you'll see that our, if you look at our tuition for that year, it was 700,000 versus 473.
Yes, yes.
Obviously, we had more placements.
More children that year, okay.
Yeah. And so that is driven solely by individual placements and where they're going to school because the mileage. We pay per mile for all that transportation. So you would, you would expect if you saw an increase in tuition, you're also going to see an increase in transportation because that probably meant you have more placements and therefore more riders.
Okay.
Unlike our school transportation, it doesn't, you know, we can fluctuate, but we have nine buses and we pay for nine buses and it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
That doesn't fluctuate. What does fluctuate, though, is your out of district.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Both of those are under contract. So the bus is through Connolly and that's a three or five year?
It's five year. We're in our fifth year with fiscal year '25. So we'll be going out to bid.
Okay.
For that contract.
And then the out of district is like the van.
Little van, yeah.
Like it's more customized. But then, was that last week or two weeks ago? That was the Accept Collaborative. So we get this, probably not the right term, but like kind of bulk negotiation pricing to...
Well, we cover our costs. We get a little budget to cover our costs because it's all members who are doing that, right? So not looking to make money. So that's our cost.
Right, right.
It's just a more efficient way for smaller towns. Like, because we're talking, we're not talking about hundreds of kids.
Right, right. Well, as you know, we had 13.
Right.
We're 10. So it is, it is sometimes an expensive piece if they're going to a school that's, say, 40 miles away or, and it's a round trip. And so you would expect to see your transportation fluctuate based on your tuition fluctuation.
Thank you so much.
I'm glad that it's good that you asked.
And Dawn, I have one as well. For the increase in the cost of out of district, is that primarily driven by the transition of students from, from Pine Hill through Chicaring? And would you expect that that's probably what we should expect now that the program has moved to Chicaring?
So there, a little bit of that. But remember, you budgeted, we had 10 budgeted in '24. We have 13 placements now. It's a mixture of different placements. So just a little bit of that was the Connections students going to Chicaring. So just a little bit of that was the connection, students going to Chicering. Right now, the base cost for that is, if you remember, every year you approve a per pupil cost, and it's like in 22, 23,000, that's all that's reflected. So it wasn't, it's actually a bargain, right? So it's not your typical out-of-district placement. That would be more like 50 to hundreds of thousands. So you're not, that didn't drive it completely. It's some of the placements within your composition that's driving that.
Well, thank you so much.
And just kind of for history, something that helped me sort of think through this over the past couple of years was each placement is specialized, right? Like, and to the point around, like, it could be a school specific to X, and that could be further away or closer, and that placement could be 20 grand or 100 grand. So like each one has to be evaluated on their own, and your present is sort of the aggregate of what that looks like.
And then the exhibit that's in your, in your budget package in your book here sort of does give you type of schools. Remember, if we do mass public, we do collaborative, we do out-of-state. And then you can see sort of what the gross and the estimated number. So it gives you a little bit of a flavor of where things are. Obviously, mass public tend to be more reasonable because you're in a public education, just like you going over to Sherburne or to Chicering. Collaborative is because it's all member operating. You're really sort of creating programs that are cost-effective for multiple districts, and therefore the costs are more reasonable. And then as you go through the non-public, and those are more for the disabilities that are more severe, that can't be sort of accommodated in some of the lower program, either the collaborative or another public school. And those can be costly. And in those, you could also have some residential students. And those can be anywhere between 200 and 400,000. So it is hard to say there is a typical because there's not a typical. And I will tell you, it changes every day. Just had our updated out-of-district meeting yesterday, and there's a lot of fluctuations. When I come to you in May, the numbers could look different because we are having some changes in placements and such, but it's something that we keep our eye on. And are, you know, those that are really boots-on-the-ground are monitoring every day. And about every two to three weeks, I sit down with that group to see where we are, to make sure that we're okay financially. So it's very volatile, and we hope it swings in the right direction, but know that it's something we're obligated, mandated to cover. And we have circuit breaker that's there at state level to help offset the cost to districts, so it's not too overwhelming. Because without that, it would be, if you, if you had, if we had asked Sherburne for another $375,000, that could be, that could be detrimental to what we do in the in-district. And we try to, we look at them separately so that they're not connected. But, you know, there is only one pool of money. So we are very grateful for the circuit breaker reimbursement. That does definitely help. So the larger cost cases, you're going to get more circuit breaker for, to help offset that. So it's good to understand that.
I think you presented this, you've always presented it as out-of-district and then in-district. The in-district is sort of focus on what you can control and really think about like, how do we maintain the level of service that we need, given the funding constraints and other kinds of things? So like, there's a lot more that we can influence there. Where I think on the out-of-district, it's a little bit more monitor it closely and like meetings pretty regularly with the teams that are doing it. And I think the other thing is that we've invested really heavily over, you know, past number of years to really increase our level of service for kids that have less severe needs, right? So that we can, I'll say, service them within the community, to keep them with friends, keep them with people that are closer by, right? The idea being is that that whole community is focused on those kids, which is also lessening the impact or the volatility on a year-over-year for that out-of-district piece.
Right, right. And saves transportation. You can see transportation, so if we can transport them with our regular school students, that's a huge savings as well. And just so you know, if we, we, there are certain students that we do keep in-district. In-district students, if they reach that threshold as well, are eligible for circuit breaker reimbursement. And so that's another place, even if we're spending money in in-district to keep students, some of them may qualify and will get some offset for that. And in Sherburne in the past has really good about keeping students in district and has had some in-district. Because if you remember, we always had a EA charged from the in-district budget against circuit breaker until we started having some of these out-of-district. But it made sense to move it back to the operating fund as well though, because we were seeing less circuit breaker coming from the in-district. So we tried to match that. And that's something we'll, we'll keep an eye on now that Chicering, now that program's moving over there. But there is eligibility for circuit breaker for special ed students who stay in district as well. So I don't want to think it's just out-of-district.
I know it's mandated, but it's wonderful to hear that every student is being supported by so many who are watching the, the comings and goings of the legislation and what monies are available to ensure that they're getting everything that they need.
Yeah, definitely.
Before closing the public hearing, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. So that will conclude the public hearing on the budget. And once again, incredibly huge thank you. I think it's very complicated, there's a lot going in and out, but I think we'll bring it down to a level that we can understand and sort of appreciate the ins, outs, and what decisions are being made to influence what those numbers actually are. So thank you to the entire team. All right. Now into the good stuff, voting for the budget.
Yeah, voting. I was going to say, don't skip that part.
So we're going to roll call vote. So I would ask for a motion to vote on approving the FY '25 budget as presented by Dawn in public, in the public hearing. We just want her.
Christine Walsh, so moved.
Thank you, Christine. And a second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
Kristen, thank you. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. Becca Hammond?
Becca Hammond, yes.
Thank you. Christine?
Christine Walsh, yes.
Kristen?
Kristen Aberley, yes.
Dennis Quant, yes. Budget passed unanimously. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Near and dear to my heart, financial reports.
Financial reports.
This year.
Back to, back in time.
So you have your standard monthly report of the accounts payable warrants that have been sent over to town of Sherburne for processing and have been approved totally by a committee member. Again, if you ever have any questions, we break it out by fund just so you can see the ins and outs. And we do them every other week, so you're seeing two sides. It's sort of fun to actually have February 29th be such a prominent date this year. Your monthly financial update is as of February 29th. In this packet, you also have a update for your special revenue revolving funds. And I think this is important when we talk about capital a little bit later, just to put your eyes on your building fund. The only new information on here that's bolded, and I see our little note about bowling being the new information, has left the report on. I'll add that back on. But you will see some variances in our education staffing numbers. And that's predominantly some too, because we have some vacancies. And so until we get some of those vacancies filled, there are some positive variances that will slowly go away. And I think one of those we're talking about is our Spanish. We have two Spanish educators, and we've been struggling with one of them. And so I think some of the savings right now, you'll see a little bit, is just that position, hope unfilled right now, but it was filled as of today. So hopefully we'll be able to ride out the rest of the year. So they will continue to fluctuate as we have comings and goings. It's been one of those years where in all four schools, we've had staff leave and come mid-year and try year and whatever we want to say. And so the financials, when those, when they hit the end of the month and some of those are vacant, and not knowing who's going to come in and replace those, we just let the salary savings sort of ride out there. So that is that. But other than that, we're, we're projected, nothing has changed, and our out-of-district is remaining the same. And as I said, we could have more updates for you when we meet in May. So I think that is it for the, for the financial report. The capital law, I'll talk about later.
Does Spanish position filled as of today? Or like boots-on-the-ground?
No, filled today. Yeah, and I'll talk a little bit about that too.
Yep. On the staffing ins and outs, just sort of like the general wins, is that something that you guys think is sort of going to be more common going forward? And it's something that we have to think about in our either staffing, budgeting, or just sort of like general resourcing, or is?
I hope it's temporary, and I, you know, again, I was going to talk about this with class, but I think, you know, as we're still seeing the effects of pandemic with students, we're also seeing the effects of the pandemic with the adults and people having to make decisions about their personal lives and their family lives is affecting the people coming and going more regularly than we would have seen six years ago. And particularly in the world of world language, we're seeing that there is just a small pool of teachers available at the elementary, middle, and high school. You know, similar to when you go out and look for a physics teacher or calculus, you know, a PBC teacher, those are hard to find. World language teachers are becoming more difficult to find. And hopefully there'll be a solution for that as we, you know, enter into what's going to be a long haul looking for teachers in general.
Questions on project update? All right. Beth, she's been done a little bit.
Okay, thank you. So I'll start with some of our events. I want to say thank you and congratulations to the Pine Hill CSA for supporting the International Light. It was certainly a success with standing room only, even that. And there was just so much excitement around that and bringing together not only current Pine Hill families, but former Pine Hill families and community members who wanted to be a part of it. So congratulations on a job well done. Super exciting. On last Thursday night, we held our industry think tank panel at the Sherburne Library, and that brought together 10 of our community members and parents and alums to come and talk about their industry and whether they were in art or plumbing or, you know, green emissions. We had a whole spectrum of folks come and talk about kind of their journey to where they, their journey from where they thought they wanted to be at 17 to where they are now, what their current responsibilities are, how they see that changing in the future, especially around AI, what skills our students are going to need if they're interested in entering that field, what recommendations they have for kids who might be interested, as well as recommendations for us here in the schools as to things we need to think about. I think it was super powerful that we had this event five years ago when we created the Portrait of a Graduate, and it's still, I think, one of my most cherished events, just wonderful. So we'll be sending out the video. I highly encourage you to watch it. You know, as a taxpayer in Sherburne, I just was reminded how lucky we are to live in a community with so many well-educated, committed, passionate people who, when you say, I need a sleep expert or I need, you know, advice with communications, we have them within the community. People are so willing to give their time and their expertise to us. You know, as a parent raising two children here, I think it was, it reinforced kind of what my husband and I have been instilling in our kids, which is, you know, that there's not one direct route in life. You're probably going to make several turns and have some bumps in the road, so building that resiliency, doing what you love and making that your, that your career. There was another theme that I can't think of right now. But I think the neatest thing is at the end of it, after we talked through all the questions, we had two student moderators, two of our juniors, Julia Ban and Devin Nefaro. After they talked through all the questions, I'd been taking notes on the side. And the skills and the recommendations and the pieces that were so important to all of these people, regardless of industry, they touched on all eight competencies of Portrait of a Graduate. So it reinforced the work that we did five years ago, the work that we're doing now in that, yes, we need to have a rigorous curriculum that instills opportunities for practice for these skills that no matter what our students face in the future, they'll be ready for anything. So again, I highly recommend watching that video, and I look forward to doing it again, maybe in less than five years. Mamma Mia is coming up this weekend at the high school. So for those of you looking for a great night out in Broadway, I suggest you come Thursday, Friday, or Saturday to see that. And then coming up on March 27th, we have a college panel, similar to the industry panel, talking about how the college landscape is changing, both with artificial intelligence and the ability of students to have help with their writing, and how we help our students stand apart from the pack when so many of our students have very high GPAs, or leaders of multiple clubs are involved in multiple athletics. So how do we make our students stand out so that colleges pick them relative to their peers in other local districts? So again, that's another worthwhile event, I think, for even our young families as we look forward. As you know, we discussed last week, the fact that our educational assistants are joining, they're becoming Unit B and the Dover Education Association contract. So we finally have a signed MOA from both the school committee and our Teachers Education Association. You have chosen a representative. And at this moment in time, I'm not going to remember who that is. Kristen?
Becca and Kristen.
Becca, Kristen, thank you. So we're getting together dates on the calendar to bring together the, the team from the school committee and the educators for our first negotiating meeting, so more to come on that. And lastly, I was going to touch on personnel. So Dawn alluded to this as well, and I spoke a little bit about it. Our FLESS program is its 11th year. So our current 10th graders were in kindergarten when we started the program, and they've moved all the way through. We have been auditing and assessing the program at kind of every transition. So when that group transitioned to middle school, we did some apple testing, which is world language testing that looks at all four domains of language, just to kind of get a sense of where they were. Then we did it at the end of middle school to see where they were relative to the prior middle schoolers who didn't have FLESS coming through. And then we're going to be assessing it again at the end of their next year, grade 11, which is the end of the required course and studies for world language. Many continue on to senior year, but it's not required. So that aside, staffing, one position at Pine Hill has been a challenge this year. We've had two educators who have needed to change or, or make difficult decisions for personal reasons. One actually remains in the building. She was not in a position where she wanted to maintain a 1.0 position, so she's doing a lesser position in the same building because she has a dedication and commitment to the Pine Hill community and another who has decided to take some time off. We did have a substitute in the middle. We did our best to support that person. We do have a PLC, or Professional Learning Community Leader, for the FLESS program. And that leader leads both Chicering and Pine Hill so that they're working on the same curriculum, working towards the same goals. That person has been supporting the, the substitute, and that person will continue to support the new person who will be joining us in the next week or so. Any questions on that?
Can you find a Spanish substitute? Or is it a general substitute and trying to?
It was a, someone who had some knowledge of Spanish. You know, again, hard to find, but when, having been through the negotiation process, you know how many of our educators in the district stay with us and how many educators we have really at the top of that salary matrix. So this is kind of a fluke. I'm not sure if it's just a bad year, I don't know if it's the pandemic, but we're hopeful to continue to support our educators to remain with us once we bring them on board, obviously through a rigorous interview process and vetting process. So speaking of personnel, I'm going to hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Conklin to talk about the assistant principal search at Pine Hill.
Yes, so we have, we're well into the process of looking for a new assistant principal at Pine Hill. We had a screening committee that came together. There were 43 applicants for the position. Screening committee made up of classroom teachers, special educators, related service providers, specialists, two parents, and the school committee's very own, Kristen Aberley. Sorted through those applications and brought in five candidates to interview last week at Pine Hill. And now we've narrowed that down to two finalists who will be meeting with parents and caregivers Thursday night via Zoom starting at 7:00. So one candidate will be at 7:00, one will be at 7:30, and then they'll spend the day at Pine Hill on Friday morning. So they'll be attending all-school meeting, meeting with the district's leadership team, meeting with faculty, meeting with students, meeting with Superintendent McCoy, and then of course, having a one-on-one interview with Principal Elect, Allison Gullinsruh. And they're going to be doing some walkthroughs and tours of the buildings to see classrooms. So we'll be, we put out a feedback form, so we'll be looking at everybody's feedback over the next couple of days. And then I'm sure Principal Elect Gullinsruh will be making a recommendation to Superintendent McCoy. But it's, I thought it was a really well-organized process. We had some great discussions. Again, I want to thank Kristen for being part of it because there's a lot of time spent going through all the resumes and cover letters and references. But we feel like we have two very solid candidates that I could see either one of them being great next to assistant principals at Pine Hill. Do you have anything to add, Kristen?
No, I agree, it went very smoothly, and I was glad to be a part of it. And was just really impressed with all the time and effort that the team put into the process.
For the, for the forums on Thursday night, how do you foresee those going in terms of, you know, conversational flow? Is it like open questions or?
So we'll probably have the candidate start by just introducing themselves, why they're interested. they're interested in the position, then via the chat, I can take questions and ask them. If people want to ask the questions themselves, they're more than happy to. But if they'd rather have me ask them, you can send them to me in the chat, and we'll ask them. If we run out of questions, I have some general questions from the interview process that I think the community might be interested to hear the responses of the candidates. So we'll definitely have no problem filling the 30 minutes. And again, I'm excited for the community to get to know both of the candidates.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. We've obviously gone through a lot of change in the leadership and the building perspective, and I think both processes have been transparent to the extent that they can be. And I think the, the effort sort of here most recently, sending out the notes and making sure people are aware of where we are in the process and kind of giving that chance to kind of have the community kind of hear, these are important positions and really kind of directly affect everything we're talking about here, you know, every meeting. So thank you for investing in it, and I appreciate you leaning in and spending the time doing it.
I was glad to do it.
Any other updates?
No, that's it.
That's it?
We didn't take any questions or feedback.
Quite a move, huh?
If you only do.
All right, discussion items. So these are items we're not voting on, but sort of more awareness, and, and we can kind of chat through any of the, the details. First item is the Accept Collaborative Agreement. So this first read, so we maybe talked a little bit about this a minute ago, but anything you want to add related to this?
So as you know, we belong to two collaboratives, the Accept Collaborative in Natick, which accepts many of our students with special needs that we aren't able to service in the district here, and we belong to the Tech Collaborative in Walpole. And they have an agreement that they have with other member districts. The last time Accept revised its agreement was in 2015, so they were due to do that. They work closely with the Office at DESI for collaboratives to align their policies with others across the state and best practice. So you have the updated recommendations. Many of them are just wordsmithing. You'll see lots of small changes here and there. And the biggest changes that you'll notice are that Westboro is joining the collaborative as another member district, which is grateful because it increases our buying power, reduces costs in a number of ways to have additional support from another district. And then the conditions of membership, they found that that language in the beginning of the policy was confusing, so they kind of reworked two paragraphs. The, you know, expectations for member, members to attend meetings hasn't changed, it's just they tried to clarify the expectation. So each district appoints one member to sit on the Board of Directors. And last spring, you appointed me to both the Accept and Tech Collaboratives to be that board member. So that's just expectations around my presence at the, the meetings, which are both sometimes in person and sometimes on Zoom. And then on page 14, there was some additions that are required by DESI, and DESI wouldn't approve this unless they were added. So again, nothing substantial, nothing that I think is groundbreaking. Happy to take any questions, though.
When I read through it, it didn't feel like anything was fundamentally changing. It was, to your point, sort of window dressing, making sure certain things are clear and whatnot. Your general read on it, and that was sort of the spirit of it?
Yeah, we discussed it at the last board meeting, so all of the superintendents around the table felt that these, these changes made sense. And, you know, having seen recently what happened with the Edco Collaborative, which collapsed, and some of the superintendents lived through that experience and were able to reflect on some of the language in this agreement, that would be helpful, you know, if ever that happened, which we certainly hope would never happen to, except for Tech.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of transparency that came down from DESI because prior to 2015, collaborators weren't as closely watched and financial mishaps were happening, which is why so much of everything Beth has to bring, like their financials to you, because that's pushed around by DESI, and a lot of the language in there was new to a lot of collaboratives to bring everyone on board and protect the districts from what could happen if it wasn't monitored appropriately.
So that's your first read. If you have any feedback between now and the next meeting, please let me know. I'm, I'm open to suggestions, and we'll certainly relay any information back to Dr. Flaherty at Accept.
Questions? So if there are any things, bring it through to me, and I can get it over to Beth accordingly. Thank you for that. For next bullet point, School Committee Public Sessions. So we've been talking about this as a, as a team for a little while here, and I think the format of these meetings is relatively formal and intended for us to kind of do the business of the school committee. But I think what, what is sort of intended by this is trying to have a little bit more informal information sharing between the community and members of the school committee to ensure that we're really getting feedback, getting insight from the community members so that we can bring that back and sort of inform decision-making that we're doing here. So it's not intended to be a formal construct, but more create some sort of informal sort of space to have dialogue with community members. Location, times, TBD, we will kind of communicate that out, but it's really intended to ensure that we're getting it not just from informal circles that we all have individually, but sort of, we can kind of formally establish some of those things as well. So more to hear about that. We will try to do that here in the remainder of the winter and into the spring, see how that goes, and, and hopefully that will be a, a good practice that, that will better inform how we carry out our role.
I think...
Questions on that?
No, I think it's great. And bringing us out into the community and, and just ensuring that we're representing everyone and we're getting feedback and live time. Becca and I have very, just tossed around the idea of the, the CSA actually is part of the, the new kindergarten parents orientation. So the CSA visits every year, and they say, "The CSA, and these are the things that we do." And wondered if that could be a, an opportunity for a school committee member to also introduce themselves and not only, you know, just share that there is a school committee, please come to our meetings, please reach out if you have anything that you want to share, but also to encourage people to consider office. Because I think sometimes we're just like, oh, it's, you know, it's, we missed the deadline to run for office, you know, but by getting in front of that, maybe we can help.
That's a great idea. And this doesn't supplant sort of one-on-one interaction?
Right.
Email contact info is up on the website and whatever? So this is sort of in addition to, not in place of. So just making sure that various modes of communication are, are covered in that regard. Update on capital projects.
Right, so there's, there's nothing to vote on, so that's why we put under updates. But I wanted to just keep you informed as to the status of sort of the HVAC project that was approved back in February. So since we last met, it was presented to the Sherburne Capital Committee and was voted unanimously to, to support. And last week, it was presented with all the town capital projects to the Select Board and was also approved. So it's moving forward. The one, the one piece of information that we sort of talked about, but I wanted to more formalize with you guys, because we formalized it more with capital and SLUP because we were like, you know, we're sort of like running with this pretty quickly, is that we have agreed to, from a school committee perspective, use $100,000 from our building fund to support this project, to sort of help offset the cost. And keep in mind that one of the key revenue sources in your building fund is the rent from Sheeta, who would greatly benefit from having the spaces identified, air-conditioned for the program that runs until 6 o'clock on some of those days. And so we will, through the rent that will be charged, and we actually will have a higher rent this year because we've expanded the program and using more space at Pine Hill, have the capacity to contribute that. With that, there's also been a thought process since we last met in February that if there was any way we could sort of expedite the auditorium itself, that has multiple issues. If you remember that, so one where the ventilation is not the greatest, it's cold right now, it's hot, and, you know, it's not hot. And so I have had discussions with the engineers to see if there's a possibility. The summer doesn't look like it's going to work, but there could be something that we could potentially do in the fall. So right now, our next phase is for us to work with the engineers to do the design and cost estimate work. And we've asked them to split that in two pieces, one for the auditorium so that we could get that moving along, and the second one for the library and the cafeteria. By doing the $100,000 contribution from the building fund, we have complete control to sort of move with that project as the auditorium and not have to worry about the town having to go bonded or borrow or whatever. So that actually worked out nicely. So I'll keep informed and waiting for the proposal to come. It's, it's always more extensive than you think because of, obviously by adding the equipment onto the roof, they had to do so, get a structural engineer involved in the study. And so there's like three different groups that are pulling together. So he knows that we're trying to expedite that one piece, and we will continue to keep you updated on that. The other new piece of information is that we do have a draft in hand from the facilities assessment. We know that both the working group with us being busy with budgets and the town being busy with budgets, we sent it out about a week ago, knowing that we probably would not be able to meet with the architects until more towards the end of March to get all the budget stuff behind us. So we should have some good information to share in parts of the report to share with you at your May meeting. But I would say the, sort of the Reader's Digest version of this is that I think they're going to recommend that this building is worth renovating and not tearing down and building new. And we'll be able to provide more information. We haven't had our initial discussion. They didn't want to put like a, a sort of encompassing statement yet because they want to have conversations with the working group, but that is where we will see, we would probably be going is every summer doing some kind of renovation. And they're giving us sort of a, a little bit of a roadmap of what needs to be done. And then, and you can sort of sandwich that with a HVAC report that we have that also talked about the ventilation. So we will keep moving forward with that. But I think it's great news that it's been so well-received at the town level at this point, and we will be presenting it briefly on Saturday. So we'll see if you're, maybe you're around. To, at the, at the open hearing, each capital project will be presented and discussed with the, with the community members. But it is, it's, we haven't had anyone vote no. Everyone's voted yes. So that's, that was great.
So I'm on the Facilities Subcommittee, so I'm the person from our committee that's sort of involved with Dawn and then the town doing. That's a couple sort of thoughts or things that I've observed. One, the town has been incredibly thoughtful with like the questions they're asking, and I think that they're hugely supportive of us going through a very measured and sort of data-driven way to kind of go about solving certainly the HVAC problem, but the broader question around, is this building fit for purpose with what we're trying to do, you know, in the, you know, 21st century sort of learning model, if you will? So both those reports are in, as Dawn mentioned, and I think they work well together. They were done in concert, right? The engineering team and then the, or the architectural team, and then the, like HVAC engineering team were subcontracted out. So it was intended to kind of like fit together like puzzle pieces to make sure that if you did one thing, it wouldn't screw everything else up and vice versa. And I think the questions from the town were like, are you throwing good money at a longer-term bad problem, right? Like, is all that stuff going to have to get ripped out in two years if we decide? Do we want, like, resoundingly, no. This is throwing good money at a very good solution to a immediate problem and is serviceable over the life of whatever decision it is that we make. So it's given us a lot of optionality to be able to not be sort of anchored because of a decision we're making here related to, to this sort of need right now. So that's sort of been reassuring in, in my mind, is that like I don't want a decision today to prevent us from being able to make the right decision tomorrow. And I think that we're leaving that sort of wide open in terms of we will, we will be unencumbered to the extent we can with, with that kind of, sort of considerations in the next couple of years as we go forward there. And the other thing is that I think that this is a really good example of this team, like pivoting and being incredibly agile and creative around how to solution for some of this. We have an immediate problem in our building and that the temperatures get really high and for portions of the year, it's not all year long. We still have plans to the extent that we need them to bring in the rental equipment like we did last year, but to be able to kind of expedite a portion of it while we're waiting for the rest of it to just sort of work the cogs in the, in the wheel, like this is sort of like ground zero of, of that agility in action. So thank you.
It's worked well to have, so the town administrators on our group, a representative from advisory, and a representative from the Select Board. So it's nice that they're here for everything. So I think that's what's making this so smooth at the different levels, because they're able to not just hear from us, but also hear from someone who's sort of independent from it, but's been involved. So, and they, they wanted to be involved, which was, which is great, because it's a huge asset of the towns, and they want to make sure it's addressed in the appropriate way. And then be there to support whatever is decide, you know, the decisions are, which so far has, has definitely worked well. We've had very few questions, and because they're so close to it, they know what Dennis just said, that, no, you're not throwing good money away. You know, this makes sense, and you'd be doing this, even if you renovate, you'd be doing this. We're not, we're not going at it a different angle because of that and trying to be too short-sighted. This is what you would be doing in the long term as well.
And sustainability is a, probably a large component of any plans that are being made at this time.
Yes, and where we can, I mean, it's just, it's schools that are, it's hard, like, but that came up at Capital. Didn't, I don't, I don't know...
Sustainability means like green?
Green energy.
Yeah, yeah. So it definitely came up. But then we've got sort of Jeremy there, who was a former DPW, and Sean Colleen, who's the current DPW, is always in those meetings, and they're ones to say, we'll try, but you can't, that's not a perfect world.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, we...
They're related, but not like, like, we've got to do this, but then a lot of the green and, like, obviously it's state-of-the-art equipment that will be energy efficient.
Yeah, energy, more energy efficient than like a lot of stuff that we have here. So right at the get-go, although we're adding where you don't have, right? It still is much more energy efficient with the energy recovery and such that, you know, is driving the prices up with some of this newest stuff, but it's, it's there to use less.
My eyes just get so big because right now I know that there are a lot of state incentives for the solar energy, and I'm always like, and I always hear you, Dawn, and I'm always like, could there be an opportunity for solar energy?
Yeah, that comes up every, I answer that question a lot. Some places it's appropriate, and some places it, it's not, but...
I don't think the answer to that question is no. I just think it, these are not linked like that. It's not like, all right, AC and 10,000 solar panels?
Yes, yeah.
It's not no to the, the, the sustainability part of it. It's just we have to solve for this.
Yeah.
And that doesn't mean that that is a yes or no later. It's, we got to do it in a thoughtful...
So the solar panels will really come up, because one of the renovations will be, obviously we've been putting on hold, and we, luckily we've been at liberty to do so, is, is a replacement of the roof or restoration or upgrade of the roof. So that's where you typically then look at the ability, because you've got to have a good base before you can add the solar panels. So we went through that whole process here at the region, and we're, we're just not a good candidate here. So some places are, some places aren't, but we're very open-minded to it.
Yeah.
But I think people need to realize there's places where things work and places where things don't necessarily work.
That's a helpful message, too, because I think there are, maybe myself included, a number of people who are like, let's just slap a solar panel on that, and it can't always work out that way. But it's in the, it's good to know that as, you know, as we're representing the town, that we are considering green options when they make sense.
Yeah, and both towns are very invested in it and are, do push. Anyone that comes before Capital where there's something like that involved, they're all over us to make sure. And there's, because there are green community grants, and where we can play into those, we will. And so we definitely work in unison with them, and because they're really wearing that hat at a town level, and we're just one piece of that. So they definitely keep us on the straight and narrow and keeps us, keep us informed and are, you know, open to listening. They, they get it, too. Because geothermal was definitely looked at at Sherburne. And I think it sounds great, but luckily the people who were so dedicated to it did the, had a grant to look into it, yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't going to work. So I don't get asked about that anymore.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Questions on Capital? This is obviously a massive investment, right? We're talking multiple hundreds of thousands, but I think we've got the data support and some of the activity that happened, is that this fall or was it, yeah, like busing kids to the, to the library and stuff, like, never let a good crisis go unused, right? But I, that's not driving the decision here. Like, we've, we'd already started this before that kind of stuff was even happened. Like we've, we'd already started this before that kind of stuff was even happening. We recognize that this is.
I mean, it's also a little bit of the humidity. So this, these new pieces of equipment will help us with the humidity because the humidity is also causes some deterioration to the interior of the building. Floor tiles popping, ceiling tiles like, you know, bowing. So this is going to save money in the long run too, because we'll have a building that's more climate-controlled and then with, when you have that, it's, but it preserves what's inside the building.
Cool. Questions? I don't know if you had any, no, you're good?
All right.
Next item, continued discussion of the school calendar. So I don't have any kind of specific bullet points to talk here, I just acknowledging that we had the workshop a week or two ago, no discussion or deliberation, you know, outside of an open meeting. I guess that was an open meeting still, wasn't it? But wanted to sort of bring this back up. Is there anything that we wanted to discuss as a, as a team here? No vote tonight on this is sort of expected here, but wanted to just put this on there just given it's a, you know, there's been a lot of energy around this over the past couple, couple of months.
And we are scheduled to vote as a joint committee on this in early April.
If not.
Will there be opportunity in that meeting for, I think Beth, we had talked about like straw polls or something to understand how far apart we are before we take the official vote or how are we thinking that meeting is going to be structured?
That would be my recommendation is to do a straw poll at the beginning to see where each of the three committees stands and then allow you to engage in conversation for as long as you need because, you know, again, as you well know, there are three committees who make three different votes, but ideally we would have our, our schools functioning on the same calendar using the same buses. So if we can get to consensus across the three, that would be ideal.
Great, thank you.
Any other kind of thoughts we want to bring up or kind of re-arbiter here as a team sort of a little bit more closed? No? Okay, cool. Action items, so these are votes, can we do these together or do we have to do them individually?
I would do that.
Individually, okay. So the annual school committee vote on the mass school choice. So I can give a quick high-level one if you want to add any of the details. So school choice is an option that we have within Massachusetts to allow for folks to opt into coming to the district to engage in school. Here in your packet, there's a quick summary in general, in the past, we have opted to not participate in this, in this program. We have the option to participate or not. That would be tied to that out of district cost that we.
Well, we get tuition from the, the sending districts, but it's far lower than what our per-perpetual expenditure is.
It's like five, it's $5,000.
$5,000, okay.
And the other issue is you don't have seats, so we're, we're tight, right? So you would never want to be a school choice school then would fluctuate where you'd have to add staff. The, the goal of school choice is to fill seats that you have regardless, and it's a source of revenue for some school districts. It might be how they fund their technology. They'll put it all into a revolving fund, so sort of for the larger districts.
It can make sense.
Have empty seats because once you accept someone in, you, you then have to have them go, they, they're eligible to go through the rest of their grades.
So recommending that we, we do not proceed with school choice. So I would ask for a motion to, the language, to not participate in school choice program for the FY '25 school year.
Christine Walsh, so moved.
Thank you, Christine. And a second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
Thank you, Kristen. Any discussion? No. Okay, roll call vote. Becca Hammond.
Becca Hammond, yes.
Great, thank you. Kristen?
Kristen Aberley, yes.
Change up the order.
Christine Walsh, yes.
Christine, thank you. Dennis Quandt, yes.
All right.
Next up is the Metco representative to the school committee, second read, so on that policy.
Christine, did you want to add anything from the policy Subcommittee or do you want me to take this?
Not yet. We are meeting on Friday, but thank you so much if you could take it.
Okay, sure. So a few weeks ago, a month ago, you read the proposed policy for the first time, this is your second read and a request for a vote. The idea is that there would be one Metco parent representative on each of the three school committees. In your case, you're voting just for Sherburne tonight, or a shared position where there could be two who share meetings. The idea that if they cannot attend a person, that we would allow a Zoom option, but this brings a voice to the table to represent the students who travel to and from Boston to make sure that we're considering their experience and, and their dynamics as who all are making decisions and informing what we do here in the schools. This would be a non-voting member. Over the last couple of years, we've, the school committees have explored the option of having a voting member, but Dover and Sherburne both have regulations that you have to live in Dover and Sherburne in order to vote. So this would be a voice, part of the conversations, part of informing your thinking and, and would be helpful as we try to be more inclusive of all voices and perspectives.
How would the position get filled?
So we have a Metco parent council that is forming and we would certainly use them as, or you would use them as a opportunity to engage parents who are part of that as well as other Boston parents to look for nominations and see who might be interested. I know a couple of parents have already stepped forward, interested if this does move forward.
Okay. If you guys are meeting on Friday, is this votable tonight or do we need to wait for any provisions or updates? No? So we're voting on adoption of the policy?
Yes, approval of the, yeah, an adoption of the policy, either one. Adopting the policy, which is.
All right. So request a motion for adoption of the policy as summarized by, by Beth, related to the Metco representative on the school committee as a non-voting member.
So moved Christine Walsh.
Thank you, Christine. Second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
Thank you, Kristen. Any discussion? Personally, I think it's a great idea, right? Getting, you know, more ideas is, I think, helpful to us as we're thinking about decisions that are affecting all the different kids in the district and literally all kids. So appreciate the work that you guys are doing on this. So with that, we'll go to a vote. Becca Hammond.
Becca Hammond, yes.
Thank you, Becca. Kristen?
Kristen Aberley, yes.
Thank you, Kristen. Christine?
Christine Walsh, yes.
Thank you, Christine. Dennis Quandt, yes. All right. Consent items, which can be voted for as a group, and that is the approval of the Student Opportunity Act Plan. We'll go through these one by one and then sort of vote holistically.
Okay, Denny, do you want to talk about this, Student Opportunity Act?
Sure. So Student Opportunity Act, or also SOA, is a plan that districts are required to submit every three years to the state for approval, to Desi for approval. The mission of the Student Opportunity Act is for school districts to look at any disparities they see in the achievement of various subgroups and then to put together a specific plan for how the district is going to address those disparities and to close those gaps. So through our data analysis using MCAS scores or panorama data or vocal data, various data sources, we've identified three subgroups as having a disparity between their peers. So those are our African-American and Black students, our low-income students, and our students with disabilities. So the three things that we're putting into place or proposing to put into place to better support those groups. And the first is a continued commitment to social-emotional learning to make sure that we are providing mental health and SEL supports for all of our students, a continued commitment to professional development around culturally responsive teaching to increase our students' sense of belonging. So again, we've talked about this before, the research that has shown that when students feel like they belong, they're better able to learn. The second strategy that we propose is our multi-tiered systems of support and continuing to further that system. One of the ways we're going to do that is by better using data. Superintendent McCoy has mentioned in the past that we'd be using a program called Open Architects, which is going to track student data, enable teachers, administrators to get a snapshot of students all in one place. So they'll be able to pull up a student, see MCAS scores, see diagnostic tests like iExcel, DIBELS, be able to see attendance, any behavior issues, so they can get a full picture of a student and can make decisions about students that are informed decisions about students in data team meetings and students support team meetings. Well, also, part of that plan is to make sure that our interventions that we're offering our students that are tier two and tier three students are all research-based interventions. So strengthening the curriculum and the intervention tools that we're using with some of our high need students. And then the third proposed strategy is the adoption of a math, a new math curriculum. So both math curriculum that are up for adoption are considered by Desi as high-quality instructional materials. They have all been vetted to be culturally responsive curriculum and we're hoping that the differentiated supports that are in place in these new, two possible new curriculums will address those gaps with some of our students with disabilities, with our low-income students, and with our African-American and Black students. Kind of the final part of the Student Opportunity Act is making sure that we are engaging stakeholders that are members of those subgroups. So continuing to bring education forward about our Title I program, which is to serve our low-income families, continued outreach to our African-American and Black students and families in the community, so our Boston students and our Black and African-American families that live in Sherburne. And also making sure that we are communicating, continuing to communicate with our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, CPAC, and also more effectively communicating with parents and caregivers if their students are receiving interventions and making sure that we're relaying to parents and caregivers the progress monitoring that we are doing for students who have been identified to have some sort of gap in their learning or kind of we need to set learning targets through a tier two or tier three intervention. So that's the overall summary of the plan and it needs to be approved by the school committees before I can actually submit it to the state. So happy to answer any questions about it.
So the consent agenda is approving the plan which you would be submitting?
Yes.
When I thought about this, like, I would have thought that there would be more, I guess, targeted plans, but like including the math curriculum sort of certainly affects that cohort, but also sort of supports the broader kind of community. Is there any, is that generally how these kinds of plans sort of are oriented or are they more, for lack of a better term, like targeted to that, to a specific cohort?
Yep. So the state in the application for it, it's kind of a dropdown menu. They give you a list of possibilities of influence-based plans. So these are programs or plans or methods that Desi has approved that have the research to support, that they make a difference in impacting these various subgroups. So those are vetted by Desi and then we go through and kind of pick the ones that also align with the district's five-year strategic plan, with other initiatives that we have, school improvement plans. So those three both lined up with parts of our five-year strategic plan.
And while we certainly, you know, realize that the new math programs that are research-based, there's white papers out on both of them will support all students, enrichment support, you know, the entire, the gamut. We, as a group, will be monitoring the progress in those areas that, that Superintendent Con could mention for those three cohorts in addition to all of our students and Desi will be holding his Academy for Growth discussion for those three.
So there's separately dashboarding and reporting for those cohorts specifically?
The application into much more detail in terms of the data that Denny had to, to provide to support the needs of those three groups of students and how this would benefit them. And then we'll be held accountable for improvement moving forward in our annual updates to Desi.
Can't wait for this tool to roll out.
Because there's going to be an external-facing dashboard too, right?
Yes, they won't have, you know, individual student data.
Right, of course, no, no high-level data whatsoever, but like very general, that's kind of great.
Yeah.
It's going to be my bookmarked website.
Questions on that? Becca? No? All right, cool. Thank you, Denny.
Donations?
Donation, or something, oh, the minutes. Any questions on the minutes that it's? Nope. All right. I didn't have anything either. Donations?
Donations, so Sherburne and Pine Hill is very lucky to benefit from the sell-in funds that was created hundreds of years ago, and they have offered us $5,000, which Dr. Brown suggested we use in the fall to provide teachers an opportunity to apply for small grants so that they can enrich and enhance the resources that are available to all students and teachers. And this is often opportunities similar to what DSEA used to offer, an opportunity for teachers to try new things, try things out before we consider adopting them across a whole grade level or school.
All right.
Accepting that $5,000 donation.
Questions? All right. So I'd request a motion to approve the consent items on tonight's agenda as summarized by Denny and.
Christine Walsh, so moved.
Thank you, Christine. Second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
Thank you, Kristen. Any discussion?
No.
All right. Roll call vote. Becca Hammond.
Becca Hammond, yes.
Thank you. Kristen?
Kristen Aberley, yes.
Thank you, Kristen. Christine?
Christine Walsh, yes.
Thank you. Dennis Quandt, yes. Great. Also informational items, the newsletters are linked there. I think everybody gets them through email and other kind of modes as well. The meeting minutes for both the Dover and regional school committee meetings in November, December, and January as well. The next meeting is April 2nd, 5:30 start time, and then there's the joint school committee meeting directly after that.
Yeah.
Same place.
Right. And it's a joint, the April 2nd, 5:30 start time is a joint meeting between you and the Dover School Committee to focus on elementary curriculum, specifically the new math curriculum and updates on literacy.
Right, that's the most important.
The most.
Going to be ready?
Oh, yes.
With that, please reach out, let me know if there are any items for the agenda for the next meeting. Appreciate everybody's time and focus on this. I know this was sort of a meaty content meeting. Once again, thank you, everybody, for pulling the information together and kind of going through it ahead of time. I think it helps keep us on point and focused. And I'll talk to you about Saturday. Anything else? All right. Motion to adjourn at 7:58 PM.
Christine Walsh, so moved.
Second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
Thank you, Kristen. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done.